I'll call the regular meeting of council for June the 5th, 2017 now to order. I have regrets tonight from Mayor Fenske, Counselor Madacek, Counselor Byer, and from City Manager Gary Sepatelli. I'll go to the approval of the agenda. Anything, Administration, anything further to add? Okay. Moved by Counselor Foley, seconded by Counselor Smook. All those in favor? It's carried, thank you. We'll go to the general inquiries portion of the meeting, if anyone has an inquiry.
Yeah, my name's Martin Greer.
Hi, Martin.
Hello, Deputy Mayor. I would like to ask a question there. Seeing that the province isn't covering 50 percent of the CSOs, right? They're not going to pay for the CSOs, are we going to still have the taxpayers pay?
We're still in discussions with the province about the CSO funding that hasn't been finalized yet. The discussions are still ongoing, and this council has budgeted for the program to continue for this year. It was already in this year's financial plan.
But you know they're not going to finance it.
Those discussions, we haven't heard that they aren't, so we're still in those discussions with them.
Okay. Great, thank you.
My question is regarding the negotiation that you guys have with Valley. Does the city have a lawyer?
We have a legal person on staff that we correspond with, yes.
When you say legal person, what do you mean? When you say legal person, I say yeah.
We have a lawyer for the city of Thompson that we would refer to if we needed to.
So did you guys see the lawyer after this negotiation? Did you guys see the lawyer to know if you guys get a good deal or?
We haven't finalized any kind of negotiations.
Oh, you don't finalize yet? Okay.
I have a couple questions down here to ask. On the last meeting, we had the city approve the resolution on 2017127 for the city council, mayor, and city manager to attend the AMM Northern District meeting, which is on June 6th. And they approved four vehicles, which cost $1,000 and $126.40. Now, is that a city vehicle or the private vehicle?
I'll go to Administration for support. I believe it's city vehicles, correct?
I'd have to clarify with Angie.
Unfortunately, we'll have to get you the answer on that. I'm under the impression that it's city vehicles that we're taking, but we can get the answer for you.
What happened is the private vehicles?
To them?
My question is, if that vehicle broke down on the highway going up to the Lynn Lake, it could be, let's say, axle broke down, engine broke down. If the private vehicles, if the city is going to pay these expenses if it happened?
Counselor Clatta might want to help me out with the answer?
Yes, in the past, city people traveling with their private vehicles are paid, I believe it's around 40 cents a kilometer, and if their personal vehicle breaks down, it's their responsibility because it's their personal vehicle. But when you take your private vehicle, you can put in for mileage equivalent to, help me out, Chief Financial Officer. It's the same amount that the provincial government pays to provincial government employees. That's been the past practice. I believe we have a policy in place, and that's what will be happening. For instance, I'm intending to travel with Counselor Wong. He will be taking a truck, I assume, right?
More like.
I won't be traveling with Counselor Wong. However, he would be entitled to mileage. Of course, I wouldn't be entitled to any travel costs because it would be his vehicle. And it's in relationship, it's the same as the provincial government pays to their employees when they use private vehicles.
So any damage is not? The city's responsibility.
No, it will be the person, their own personal?
And here, you say it resolved that the council and the city of Thompson, excuse me, endorse Counselor Wong and Counselor Byer to let the name and stand as the Northern Director. Is it one director or two director going to get selected from Thompson?
I believe it's just going to be the one director. Counselor Wong's on there right now. Maybe you'd like to clarify?
Northern District will be two. So let's say there's no other municipality put a name forward. So let's say we got nominated from the floral, so let's say it's only two names stand. Usually, we get elected.
So maybe you're getting two, right?
Yep.
Okay. Another question. 2016, last year, we have spent $245,000 plus on legal expense. Now, I'd like to know, these legal spend, are they the lawyer from Thompson here or the law firm from somewhere else?
I'll summarize a bit, and then I'll go to Ms. Krentz for some backup on that. But our legal expense is a number of things. For instance, last year for 2016 was our negotiating year with the two contracts, so it was a high year for legal fees just with the contract issues with the two unions. Ms. Krentz, you want to have anything further for that?
Just regards to location, there's, we have one firm in town that we deal with, and then we also have some that are down in Winnipeg, a couple of firms down there, yeah.
So any lawyer from Thompson can? Like?
Are we?
Is it? Yeah, I'm talking about, yeah.
Ms. Krentz?
Yes, it's all the same.
Okay, so the lawyer from Thompson here have a chance to be able to earn some fees?
Yes.
From city of Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else for general inquiries? Going twice, going three times? Thank you. We'll move on to number four, which is our adoption of minutes. 4.1 is the adoption of variation order number 978-17 on May 23rd, 2017. The resolution is moved by Counselor Smook, seconded by, oh my goodness, you guys. Counselor Foley. Be it resolved at the minutes of the public hearing for variation order 978-12 that for 208 Riverside Drive, held in Council Chambers, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Tuesday, May the 23rd, 2017, be adopted as circulated. I'll go to Administration for support. Anything further? No? Okay, call for the quest, or I'll go to the mover, sorry, Counselor Smook. Call for the question. All those in favor? It's carried unanimously, thank you. The next resolution is number 2017143, moved by Counselor Smook, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Be it resolved at the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in Council Chambers, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Tuesday, May 23rd, 2017, be adopted as circulated. Go to Administration, anything further? I'll go to the mover, Counselor Smook. Call for the question. All those in favor? It's carried unanimously, thank you. We go to committee reports. Tonight, we have a Development Review Committee report, and that will be read by, because the chair is Counselor Madacek, who is not here, so I'll go to Ms. Krentz to tell me who's reading this.
Either the co-chair or?
Counselor Clatta, you're on that committee. Would you be okay to read that?
I don't know.
Thank you. So in the absence of the chair, Counselor Madacek? Counselor Clatta is going to read our Development Review Committee report for June 5th.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The council members are Chair Ron Madacek, myself, Judy Colada, Mayor Danis Fenske. Administration is City Manager Gary Sepatelli, our Director of Planning and Community Development, Matthew, our Director of Public Safety and Fire Chief, John Maskareen, and our Deputy Chief, Mike Bergoin, our Chief Building Inspector, Jeff Wedge, our Building Inspector, Danny Haywood, and our Senior Clerk for Planning and Development is Stacy Rockwell. We have citizen and organization representatives. We have Dwayne Porty, Stella Locker, we have a Thompson Housing Agency representative, a Thompson Chamber of Commerce representative, and the School District of Mystery Lake representative, and that representative. Those representatives are Janet Brady and Keith Dirksen. The role of the Development Review Committee is to make recommendations to council on all land development issues, including proposed development plan and/or zoning by law amendments, subdivision applications, variation applications, conditional use applications, proposal for development that deviate from existing development controls, to review and report to council on all matters respecting the sale and development of municipal land, including relating to zoning, and to consider and report on all matters relating to building inspection services. Our committee break is July and August. The 2017 Policy Employee Initiative has been, number one, to revisit the Thompson zoning by law and implement tools to attract investment to the city, i.e. the financial assistance by law, and two, to hire an economic development coordinator. 2016 Building Inspection Report, projects coming in 2017, is the Subway Restaurant at the Interior Inn property. 128 Hemlock is now demolition only, the Manitoba Liquor, the MLCC, City Center Mall Parking Lot Development, Lyons Senior Manor, Lyons 55, the wastewater treatment plant, coal storage facility at the Northern Airports, and the Mystery Lake Convenience Store Gas Bar, which is a $2.3 million investment. Sears and Pizza Hut. The 2017 Building Inspections Report to end of May 31st is five commercial and 15 residential. The total value of construction and permit fees is yet to be determined, as the permits have not all been applied for. The capital projects update is the department is undertaking the 2017 Capital Projects Program. Capital projects include the Selkirk Phase II road reconstruction, the integrated bike lanes along Selkirk, the pedestrian sidewalk renewal along Selkirk, the multi-use path system expansion, Phase One, along Thompson Drive and Princeton Drive, the library and City Hall air conditioning unit installation, hopefully that's coming soon, engineering building HRV system and shower room, and the continuation of the water main renewal projects. And that's the report. I have a question from our planner, if you'll indulge me.
Absolutely.
At our last Development Review Committee meeting, we approved the sale of a river lot. We haven't seen it on our resolutions as yet. Is that what's happening with that?
Yeah, so that development agreement will have to go back to the Development Review Committee for consideration once it's constructed, and so that'll happen more than likely at the next Development Review Committee meeting, which is not coming up, as that has been postponed, as there's no quorum. So that'll be submitted to the city manager to submit to Development Review Committee as I will not be here.
Thank you, and that brings me to, I understand you tendered your presentation, so I'd like to thank you.
With your indulgence, on behalf of your, of council, for your service to council, and I want to wish you well in your future endeavors. And I probably approve you making some remarks, if you'd like to make some remarks, seeing as how this is your last meeting.
That's fine with me.
Go ahead, if you'd like to. I was going to mention it in the mayor's report, but since your development review, that's okay. Obviously, on behalf of the city, I'll do it now, then. We wish you luck in your future endeavors as you move on from the city of Thompson. If you'd like to offer any remarks, you're welcome to. If not, we can carry on.
Just keep doing what you're doing. And best of luck in 2018. Keep best of luck.
Counselor Clatta for the Development Review Committee report. Any more comments from council on that? All right. Let's go to correspondence, 6.1. We have a letter of thanks from the Sykes and Crips family. This was addressed to Mayor Fenske on May 30th, 2017. He received it. Dear sir, this letter is written on behalf of the families of the late Connor Sykes, Liam Sykes, Shane Crips, and Dylan Crips. As I'm sure you are well aware, Connor, Liam, Shane, and Dylan passed away in a canoeing accident. As a collaborative family, we are devastated and struggling daily to come to terms with this tragedy. Having said all of this, we wanted to take a few moments to recognize this entire city of Thompson for their love, compassion, kindness, and generosity. The support that we have received has been outstanding. Secondly, we wanted to recognize all of those who were involved in the search of our loved ones, in particular, the RCMP Thompson detachment, the Thompson Fire Department, Manitoba Hydro, and the citizens involved in the search. Special thanks to Blair and Amanda Menard. It is not hard to understand why the Sykes and Crips family love this city and its amazing and friendly people. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you to all. Respectfully, the loving members of the Sykes and Crips family. Moving on to number seven is resolutions. Our first resolution is Resolution Number 2017144, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Smook. Whereas Safety Services Manitoba has been authorized to manage the Operation Red Nose Program in Manitoba, and whereas Safety Services Manitoba is requesting that the city of Thompson be identified as the host to operate the local Operation Red Nose organization campaign in the city of Thompson, and whereas the city of Thompson will take on all responsibilities of organizing and implementing this service. Now therefore, be it resolved that council approve the request from Safety Services identifying the city of Thompson as the host organization and enters into a contract between Safety Services of Manitoba and the city of Thompson for 2017. I will go to Administration if there's anything further. Ms. Krentz?
Just, this is an annual resolution required just for the operation of the Operation Red Nose Program.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to the mover, Counselor Ellis, anything?
I'm supporting Operation Red Nose Program in our city, and we should be supporting it.
I'll go to council, Counselor Wong.
So from my understanding, so that means the city is taking over the operation, or just?
No, this is a, we do this every year. I'll go back to?
Ms. Krentz to identify that?
Yeah, I believe the agreement was with the city of Thompson, but the local volunteers, yeah.
It's a, this is a regular resolution that we do every year for them. Any other comments from council? All right, I'll go to the question, then. All those in favor? It's carried unanimously, thank you. Resolution 2017145 is moved by Counselor Smook, seconded by Counselor Wong. Whereas in 2017, the city of Thompson has a total budget allocation of $1,736,500 for capital paving projects, and whereas on April 10th, 2017, council passed Resolution Number 2017097, awarding the contract to Maple Leaf Construction Limited for $1,548,423.45, all applicable taxes included, as pretender file number 10617. And whereas the city of Thompson has completed a thorough analysis of the areas that have been affected by the winter of 2017, and have provided several areas that need to be addressed in the summer of 2017. And whereas the additional work was reviewed and supported by the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee. Now therefore, be it resolved that council approve the additional work at an estimated cost of $250,000 over and above the awarded contract prices to Maple Leaf Construction Limited. The additional work is to be as follows. Number one will be Public Lane from Thompson Inn to Thompson Drive North. Number two is Nelson Road from the four-way stop sign to Moke Street in front of Mystery Lake Body Shop. Number three is Princeton Drive to Waterloo Avenue intersection by Juniper Center. Number four, Princeton Drive to Station Road by the old UCN Buildings. Number five is Wolf Street and Arctic Drive by Burtwood School. Number six is Wolf Street and the Wolf Street intersection. Number seven is Arctic Drive and Campbell Drive intersection by way of the, by four-way stop sign. I will go to Administration for anything further? Anything?
Yeah, just to verify that this was heard several times at the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting, and further that the funds, as the bidder came in, as Maple Leaf Construction came in at a lower cost, we do have a high contingency. So a portion of that contingency plan with the rerouting of funds for a cemetery project that will be rerouted to the following year for capital will be used to undertake this additional work in the capital season.
Go to the mover, Counselor Smook, anything to add?
Yeah, just that? These were the areas that were past pothole repairs, and Gil, manager of infrastructure, they went around, did a pretty good inventory of it. These aren't our only troubled areas, but these are the worst troubled areas we'll take on this year, and hopefully move forward with the plan to do some more repairs.
Thank you. Council, any other comments? Oh, Matt, sorry.
Well, is that later on this year, at the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting, the engineering team will present a plan moving forward for this work, so that it can be reviewed for the subsequent years.
If I may, I just would like to comment also that I think that it's good for citizens to know that we listened loud and heard you loud and clear, that there are definitely hotspots, and our administration team has done a good job with quickly isolating these particular areas. And like Counselor Smook said, it's not the only areas, that next year, we're going to have the same problem, maybe in some of these areas or even in other areas, and we are aware of that. And we're looking at getting a plan together year after year, as the winters now are taking its toll, and our roads are actually just falling apart. And so these are going to be our first addressed areas, so we do appreciate the citizens for their patience as we move forward to get this work done. I will call for the question. All those in favor? It's carried unanimously, thank you.
Next resolution, number 2017146, is moved by Counselor Smook, seconded by Counselor Foley. Whereas the city of Thompson has applied for financial assistance under the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund for the Water Main Program Phase II project for $3 million. And whereas the city of Thompson has received approval from the government of Manitoba on February 23rd, 2017, for the Water Main Program Phase II project. And whereas the Water Main Program Phase II project will be cost shared with the government of Canada, $1,500,000, the province of Manitoba, $750,000, and the city of Thompson, $750,000. Now therefore, be it resolved that council authorize Administration to enter into the contribution agreement under the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund between the city of Thompson and the government of Manitoba in order to access the funding for Water Main Program Phase II project. I'll go to Administration, anything to add? Matt?
Essentially, this outlines the plan of work for this year that you're going to see. A few highlights as well, item one, item two, water and sewer renewal, so those two are, have been amended from the original proposal that was put forward to council. So the work is to begin, actually right now, on Beaver and Steakhorn, so you will see crews that have been mobilizing there right now. And we just need to approve this CWF fund for us to execute the work.
A couple of mooters, Counselor Smook, anything to add? It's just nice to see that there is still government. Funds flowing to help us offset our costs and that this work is getting done. Thank you.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you. Resolution Number 2017147 is moved by Counselor Ellis and seconded by Counselor Foley. Whereas on May 23rd, 2017, Resolution 2017142 approved that council enter into an agreement excluding Part B, Article 10-2 and 3 with the government of Manitoba for the operation of the city of Thompson Community Safety Officer Program. And whereas Section 77.3-2-B states that an agreement respecting the operation of a community safety officer program must address the financing of the program. And whereas a letter has, a letter was, and whereas a letter was been received from Manitoba Justice indicating that approval of the new agreement does not rescind Thompson's request for ongoing provincial funding or impact these discussion with Manitoba. Now therefore, be it resolved that council enter into an agreement which includes Part B, Article 10-2 and 3 with the government of Manitoba for the operation of the Community Safety Officer Program. I'll go to Administration for any support? Jenny? Go ahead.
...to exclude those two provisions that dealt with the funding, but in the Manitoba Police Services Act, it's required in order for an agreement to be in place. So if we want the CSO agreement to go forward and start the program, this agreement has to be approved.
Thank you. I'll go to Counselor Ellis.
Do the safety officer program forward. And also, I'll take the provincial government at its word that it, by passing this resolution, that it won't impact us negotiating any kind of funding arrangement between us and them. But yeah, I'm in support.
Thank you. Council, Counselor Clatta?
I'd like to, for us to be informed as to how long the previous agreement funded us for, it was for part of this year, I understand. So when did, when does that expire? It's during 2017 at some point.
I think we start May 25th of this year.
Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
So with that, when the program expired, CSO has actually lost their provincial statutes, so they were unable to act in their full duties. So the past week, they've lost that. So we've gone from, speaking with the RCMP this morning, the typical calls for service they have had previously was 320 for the week. Last week, they had 420 calls without the CSOs, which accounted for an increase of 31.25% increase that the RCMP had to do. So it's just kind of puts things into perspective of what their CSOs are doing out there and how we're assisting the RCMP.
Thank you. Counselor Clatta?
The CSOs are still, they're still working, but they're obviously, they're not allowed to act in the full capacity, so we're doing just different bylaws and stuff like that.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? It's carried unanimously, thank you. Moving on to bylaws. The bylaw, Resolution 2017148, it is moved by Counselor Wong, seconded by Counselor Foley. Be it resolved that bylaw 1955-2017, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to create a financial assistance program for the city of Thompson and implement a tax abatement program for eligible properties and developments in the city to encourage and assist in the renovation and redevelopment of buildings in the city of Thompson, be given second reading. I'll go to Administration for support. Anything to add?
I just understand there was a question last council meeting with regards to Manitoba housing, and if they are eligible for this bylaw. So just to clarify, in the bylaw, there's a laundry list of qualifiers that you'll see in terms of zoning and types of build. So if a Manitoba housing development is residential with five or more dwelling units, then that activates the bylaw, so they are more than welcome to apply for the financial assistance program. And other than that, I think same comments as previous council meeting.
Thank you. I'll go to Counselor Wong as the mover. Anything to add?
Thank you. Thank you for your answer for that. But I still haven't got the MLCC. Are they qualified? And now's the new thing about the urban reserve, they're going to build a Shell gas, uh, not Shell gas, they're going to build a gas station. Are they qualified? That is still unknown. And I believe this bylaw is targeting the property owner, which is commercial property owner. What is the, what is the number of the property owner that versus, because last meeting, I did ask the mayor for clarification. What group of the people? did ask the mayor for clarification, what group of the people that we are targeting and what is the objective? So he said clear, business, try to retain and attract. So I did raise that question about business. When you come to business, I like to know what's the ratio between the business owner and the property owner? If you're targeting just a small group, from my gather, all my information, the business owner like myself, which is own the business but do not own the building, is a, is a big group of this target incentive, which is I'm talking about 85% that business, for instance, the shopping center mall, the city center mall, all of them pretty much not qualify for this. The Plaza and the Giant Tiger, which is the Westwood Mall, they will not qualify for this application unless it's the owner, but the owner just own the building, but they do not run the business. So that's one of my other question. So this is another thing, I've been attending to the finance committee, finance and administration committee quite regularly. I never heard the discussion about where the money come from. If you want to reduce the tax from, for the business, which is a good idea, especially right now, we are going to face an impact to the, to the city, we must do something for the business to retain, to create jobs, which is I 100% support that. But there's still a lot of unanswered question, which is where the money come from? We have this much of expenses already budget every year. To balance the expenses, we need the revenue to balance it. So now we reduce the revenue and we never talk about where the money come from? How are we going to offset the difference? So without knowing all that, I don't know. And also, this is a big deal. We did make a public meeting with, with people potential interested to buy a big lot. We did that public meeting, but come to this, we never had one meeting consult with the business. We never got any input from the business, who are interested, what kind of input? We need a brainstorm to make this bylaw work. I don't want to be just a Band-Aid or fast bill, just to throw it out to show the public, oh, we are trying to do something. But there's still a lot of question, haven't got the answer yet. And another point I'd like to make, how is it fair to the business that already done the renovation, which is not qualified for this, this bylaw? So you have created an atmosphere to help out the competition to renovate now and compete the person already done the money into the renovation because it's not retroactive. So there's, I don't know what else I can point it out, but those are the few questions I, I have. And I need some answers before I can, I can, I can support this resolution because I'm a businessman and I don't get the benefit of it. How are you going to retain me? When I'm done my lease, I probably walk out.
Want to clarify any of those answers?
And I'm going to start from your, your most, your last statement, because then you're going to have to remind me because I was trying to take notes and, you know. So it would always be retroactive, no matter when you roll out a, roll out a bylaw at any point in time, unfortunately, people will miss out because a bylaw will be rolled out and, you know, if Westwood Mall just did renovations to their exterior, so if this was rolled out last year, they would have been able to be eligible for it. But unfortunately, we aren't retroactive, I mean, it's at the will and the discretion of council, but at this point, as I understand, we're not going to be retroactively implementing this for the people who renovated their property, the property owners who renovated it, because then you have, you're opening up a Pandora's Box with regards to how far back you go back, other people may want this. So it's at your discretion as this bylaw rolls out, if you would like to do that, but at this point, that's not part of the conversation. Secondly, this bylaw is very nuanced in nature. If you were to, and this was discussed at the last Development Review Committee meeting, if you were to target, this is for property owners and taxpayers, if you were to target leases and leaseholders that are in a bunch of qualifiers, be it you own a restaurant or you own a contracting business or what have you and lease land and you want to renovate your space, that opens up another bylaw. This is the first bylaw, right? So this was just explained at D R C. This is the first bylaw, that would be another bylaw. You can't integrate the two. They're two separate things, right? So I'm hoping as this matures, that another bylaw may be constructed with regards to your situation. You own a restaurant, but you don't own the physical building. I'm hoping that eventually another bylaw will roll out with regards to exactly what you're saying, because it's a great idea. But I think it's a amount, it's, it's with regards to this, you want to see the, if this is very effective or not, and how can you make it more effective? Well, I think that you might be able to see the ratio based on the nature of who applies for this. If five people are applying for this in one year, we know that perhaps there's other business owners that are leasing more than owning. So then perhaps that might trigger another bylaw to be constructed, simply as the one you were speaking about earlier, Counselor. So I think it's a great idea. We didn't construct it. And thirdly, with regards to the consultation, this was heard several times in public meetings. Finance and Administration, I believe, heard it three or four times this year, correct me if I'm wrong. Development Review Committee meetings, we have considered this bylaw ever since, I believe, October of last year. So there was public notice. I do believe this was put in the newspaper two or three times as well. We had the chance to gain public input into this bylaw. Sure, I mean, for consultation, we can always improve on that and go out to the public with public open houses or other forums for input as well. That just wasn't put into a bylaw such as this. It would be a good idea, definitely, for all bylaws, but with the amount of human resources we have, we're very limited with the amount of time we can do in terms of after-hours consultations with a small bylaw like this. I don't know, do you have any other questions? I'll flip it over to Jenny with regards to the financial components.
Yes, so just in regard to the budget, there won't be any reduction to the tax revenues that we're currently receiving. The tax credit applies only to the increase to the taxes that they would be incurring based on the additions that they've done. So if there's assessment increase, they wouldn't receive that increase in their taxes until a couple of years after based on the, the schedule in the bylaw. They just wouldn't be paying an additional amount for those increases that they have done.
Any other counsel who can say?
Thank you.
I want to say again?
I'll go to Counsel Clatta, you have a comment?
Uh, yes, I'm excited to see this expanded from just the downtown area because I, I think that, I, I don't think that we should have had a bylaw that related to one area of town and not the other business people. So it has been expanded to the City of Thompson. So that being the case, I couldn't have supported it for a portion of the city.
Any other comments? Counsel Smook?
I just feel this bylaw can be expanded to maybe business owners. The only problem there is that coming down the line when we do that, it will be the landlord of the building will have to have the final say, if even the building owner, or building occupants are to do the renovation. So I think that'll be a whole new class of, of problems in itself, but I, I can see that moving forward, that we can expand on that.
Thank you. Counsel Ellis?
I'm in support of this. I think that by putting, by putting these measures in place, it allows for property owners to consider, you know, expanding their, expanding their, their properties and improving their properties where they might, otherwise might not have. So I'm in support of that. It's, and in bringing in new property tax revenue into the, into the city. I'd also be in support of a, a second bylaw when it, when it comes to business owners that do not own their, own their properties. So I would be in support of that too. So I think the, both of them can work hand in hand.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel Wong?
I still haven't got the answer for the urban reserve, so are they going to be included? Because there's a different status. And when you talk about the public consultation, it's like, this all pretty much like internally. So I want to see the one like the, we, we host one in the V R C C, so everybody can attend, to get their input, what they all look like, what they're going to sound like. And also I think this is too rushed to put in one resolution or one bylaw just to accommodate to a small group of the people that own the property and also run the business. That's a two different thing. You have to be benefit when you own and also run. If you own, you don't run the business, so it's no benefit whatsoever, right? So, and yes, I need to see something that can retain and attract business, but so far, this is only a small group. Obviously, I did go and ask a lot of business people, which is I engage with the business, which is I'm a business person in Thompson. I've been talking to a lot of business people that own the business and also own the building, some of them, they just look at it and just laugh at me. And then I say, wow, they say, wow, it's okay, now you give me a break after the third year, fourth year and fifth year. After fifth year, you come back to haunt me because of the, the value go up. And also they worry about this assessment branch is incompetent about when it comes to assessment business. So there's so many questions. It's not just like, oh, push one out and then expect it's, get a good result. So I'd like to see we have more discussion and figure out all this problem, or barrier, I call that, before we bring forward. Why, why are we rushing this? I, I just can't see it. I'm the person who really is affected with this and I don't see it, and then I have a strong voice to explain why. And the rest of the council, why they want, they want to rush into that part I don't understand. And a recorded vote, please.
Thank you. Matt, did you have any comments on that?
Well, I think there's a few outstanding comments to make. It's not rushed, we're following a process and this is a standard process that we always follow with bylaws. I think actually this took quite a little longer in time. I mean, this idea was brought forward in October, so we have taken time and revisited this. In terms of making the comment that this has been closed, again, it's just been heard at several committees, I'd say two handfuls of times, Development Review Committee and Finance and Administrative Committee. We have had comments, numerous comments, we've revisited this, revisited, pardon me, this, finance and planning and development numerous times. So with regards to that, I think this time has been good. Again, going back to my comments, there's always room for improvement with consultation, always. You can always go out and consult with the community, you're doing a good job at that, so way to go. I mean, we could always, again, go to the multipurpose room, go to any of the boardrooms after hours at 7:00 P. M. But again, I'll say that we do have limited resources at the city at this point, so we have to strategically do that. You are setting a precedent with every single bylaw though, this is just another bylaw. With regards to, again, it being rushed, this is, again, I've said this before in Development Review Committee, this is a small piece to a larger pie. So again, this is one bylaw. With regards to your situation, that is another bylaw. Counselor Smook hit the nail on the head with regards to you're opening up another Pandora's Box. If you're a business owner, you want to renovate, it's at the discretion of, again, the owner of the property. So then that is a very nuanced point, laundry list of points in another bylaw. There, that's, that's the exact reason why it's not consolidated into this bylaw. This bylaw has, this is not exclusive to the City of Thompson, there is a best practices list of municipalities across Canada that do this. It has been successful. So this is just not a unique City of Thompson situation and a unique assessment branch situation. Brandon does this, there are other smaller communities in Manitoba and across the prairies that do this. We've had to tweak it to be a little bit more unique to the city here, but other than that, I mean, this is a, this is a successful bylaw and a laundry list of other bylaws. With regards to the urban reserve, this is for property taxpayers, so I'm not sure if in the urban reserve, they are not paying taxes, so this would not apply to the urban reserve. Am I correct in saying that, Jenny?
Okay. All right. Thank you, Matt, for clarification. Counsel Clatta, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to, I note that Counselor Wong didn't move to table this, so I'm going to note that this is a second reading, it's not a final reading. So I would suggest that businesses who have a, who would like further discussion perhaps contact Development Review or, or contact the city with their concerns so that they can be discussed prior to third reading of the bylaw. So I'm, I'm willing to support second reading. I would hope that we've answered some of the questions prior to third reading where my vote may change without, without answer. So this being only the second reading, we do have some time with this.
Thank you. Is finally, Counsel Foley?
Yeah, just to echo what, what Matt had said, I mean, discussing this since October is quite some time and we did, originally when this bylaw came to pass, it was within a small vicinity of the downtown area and we realized that, you know, we needed to expand that to the entire City of Thompson. This is also a voluntary program, if I'm understanding. So if there is a business owner that is worried about getting hit five years down the road or what have you, they don't have to go for this program. That being said, it would do no harm to anybody, any business owner, if they decided to not do it, they can continue business as usual. I do like to put on the side of caution that when we agree or disagree with resolutions that are going through, we need to make sure that we don't put our own financial issues on the table when we're deciding that we don't want to vote, vote for or against something.
Thank you. I'm going to call for the question on this, all those in favor. It's a recorded vote, so voting in favor is Counsel Clatta, sorry, all those opposed? Thank you. Voting in favor, Counsel Clatta, Counsel Ellis, Deputy Mayor Valentino, Counselor Smook and Counselor Foley. Voting against, Counsel Wong. Thank you. That ends bylaws. The mayor is obviously not here for the mayor's report, but I do have a mayoral proclamation to read out. Whereas older adults in Manitoba are valued members of society and deserve to live with dignity. And whereas abuse of older adults is an ever-increasing issue in our society that crosses all socioeconomic boundaries. And whereas most abuse of older adults is hidden. And whereas ageism is a major cause of abuse of older Manitobans. And whereas older Manitobans deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and important and active members of this province. And whereas preventing abuse of older people will help improve the quality of life for all older adults in Manitoba and will allow older adults to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of Manitoba. And whereas empowering older persons is an effective tool in preventing the abuse of older adults. Now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Thompson, I hereby proclaim June 15th, 2017, as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in the City of Thompson and encourage all of our residents to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of seniors. This is signed by Mayor Dennis Fenske dated Thompson, Manitoba, this fifth day of June 2017. In regard to the mayor's report, some events I attended on behalf of the mayor was Sport Manitoba was here to do a Host Society tour. I gave greetings on behalf of the City of Thompson. The Host Society represented approximately six to seven out-of-town guests for the weekend. They held a workshop with our, our Host Committee, they are right on track for the Manitoba Games. I also attended the grand opening of E T Blades in the Giant Tiger Mall, I guess we call it. I also had the opportunity to speak with the owner, one of the owners, Cam, who is one of the owners of the Giant Tiger Mall and the Plaza Mall. It was nice to meet him and he's interested in sitting down to listen to some of our business initiatives the next time he's in the city. I want to just remember to all citizens that it is our community cleanup week, or we have been trying to clean up for a while now. And this week, our landfill fees are free if you have to take to the landfill. We are also having our June 10th, the Saturday, at Robins Donuts is the garbage pickup and clean up our city. So we are trying to do our best as the City of Thompson with initiatives, whether it be with the landfill, landfill, with street sweeping, with public works, with the Robins Donuts Day. So we are really asking everyone in the community to pitch in because, yep, things look dirty around here, it's that time of year, so we all need to take pride in our city and we all need to help and try and clean up and make a difference within our city. Be aware of our street sweepers because it's very, very dusty, so if you're driving or bike riding, be careful of the dust behind them. And I think earlier we talked about some of the contractors are arriving in town, so we have heavy equipment coming to town as they mobilize for the wastewater treatment plant and our Water Main Renewal Program. So please be aware of the heavy equipment, I think a lot of it may be on Princeton Drive. We are trying to do social media and press releases to keep the citizens aware of that. We're going to keep you up to date on our street sweeping, just like we did the snow clearing. We're going to keep you up to date on our street sweeping, just like we did the snow clearing. We'll try and communicate to all of you the best we can so we can get everything in ship-shaped cleanup form around here. And I think the last thing I want to mention is high water. High water at Paint Lake and maybe where you camped last year or your cabins last year, it's a total different landscape out there this year. There was a drowning just recently south of Thompson. So please be very, very careful when you're around our waterways this year as we have an extreme high, high water table and the lakes are very, very high. I will leave it for Council if you attended any events on behalf of the city that you gave greetings at, if you would like to note them. Counsel Smook?
Not that I gave greetings, but I was at Women of Distinction, there was three of us counselors in attendance. This year, the Y did something very unique. There was only three nominations and they were all fitting in very different categories. So all three women received the Women of Distinction Awards. It was very nice for that. Yes, just want to mention the cleanup of the Causeways two weeks ago after the Sykes and Cripps family crisis was very good. But I toured out there today just to look at it and already we're getting little bits and pieces of garbage or starting there. So I'm going to try get, whether I do it or somebody, at least get a garbage can for the pop cans and burger bags and stuff like that because it's a shame to see that get back into the shape it was. And just on a personal note, my son Sean Hay is going to turn 40 this Saturday and everybody in Thompson is invited to McCready Campground with his family to help him celebrate. So 4:30 till whenever is Sean's birthday party, so please attend.
Thank you, Counsel Smook. That's a good way to, oh, Counsel Foley?
Yes, not something in the, in the past short while, but on the, the 20th of June at 7 o'clock in the multipurpose room at the VRCC, the City of Thompson, in conjunction with the Northern Manitoba Offroad Association, will be holding an open house in regards to the off-road park that's located south of town. The main purpose is to provide some information and provide an opportunity for people who have interest in motocross. The big goal is to get the kids with the dirt bikes off the streets in town and provide them with a safe place to, to enjoy their hobby. Also, there have been, on Smith and Despens, there's been a couple of off-road, no-off-road signs have been posted. There'll be a couple of barricades that will go up. It doesn't mean that you can't off-road in that area, however, the, the actual path to be used is alongside the tree line on the back of Burnwood School. So we're not saying that you can't off-road in that area with your vehicles. Just be respectful and use the now designated portion of that trail. And we're going to see a couple more signs posted around and we're going to hopefully focus on where you can ride as opposed to where you can't ride.
Thank you, Counsel Foley. Can I get someone to move to adjourn? Moved by Counsel Smook, seconded by Counsel Ellis, all those in favor? Carried unanimously, we are now adjourned. It's very hot in here. Thank you all for coming.